My name is Dirk Roten. I'm the chairman. I'd like to just go around the table and have members introduce themselves. We'll start with John.
John Moran.
Susan Mooney.
Ian McKenna.
Charlie Anderson.
Larry Hady, SRPC.
Thank you. This is the Nottingham Planning Board meeting for Wednesday, February 9th. And we'll get started with the public hearings. So the order of things, if you do not have an agenda, is that we'll go through the applications that have been made and are ready for public hearings and discussion. Then we'll go through other business. And tonight, we have a number of other business items, primarily for design reviews and conceptual reviews. I just want to make everybody clear that those type of reviews are non-binding. They're primarily reason for communication between the applicant, the potential applicant, and the board. Applicants often have, before they come, make a formal application, want to vet a couple of things, or have some questions for the board. So that's when a design review or a conceptual review will occur. And that is a little bit of back and forth. We can, in some cases, take public input. And again, it is public input. It's not a hearing. But we do like to have the applicant hear from the public because it could determine some of the information they may apply for. So just keep it in mind that those would be potentially future applications that we would be hearing. Those are not formal applications that are made to the planning board at this point. Then we do have some time for public comment, if anybody has something that's outside the current business that we can talk about. And then we have some administrative things that the board handles at the end of the meeting. So to begin the meeting itself, I'd like to call forward case 21010LLA. It's a lot line adjustment. It's an application from Mark and Patricia Wasson. And 70-25 LLC for a lot line adjustment. The property is located at Lamprey Drive in Nottingham, New Hampshire, and identified as tax map 70 lots 23 and 25. This application was first made in, I think in May 2021. And we had a few hearings on this. And some time that the, this was right when the town voted in, was it April 19th? For acceptance of roadways in the town. And this was adjacent to one of those roadways. And then we wanted to allow the applicant to get their own legal opinion and some counsel. And we're at the point now where we've been in our queue for quite a long time. We just want to have the applicant come in and give us where they are in this process that they would like to either move forward or provide some direction to the board so we can make some decisions.
Thank you, Chairman. And my name is Mark Wasson. I'm here representing my wife and I. Excuse me. Thank you again for hearing. We put this in unfortunately right in between when the roads. So we were like on the, there was a lot the town had to determine their position, whether it would have, how they could proceed with this. We had a couple of meetings. I spent money for the survey and all ahead of time, not knowing this. So we, our position was to wait to, before extending more money, as to where the town's positions on taking the roads and management. Basically, the guidance was, you know, the current owners of the property need to have clear definition before me as a proposed probably would get a fair judgment on it. So the question I have here is, I know that the owner of this property that I'm looking to get a lot line adjustment from has brought forward, he has a master plan, and has some questions out there of how this roads affect his future use of it. And obviously, this is a finger of it. So I was here a couple of weeks ago, and I know that it was just presented. So I don't know if there's been any further on that or not, at that position. And for my end, I, the only question I had really pushed forward is, could this, would this potentially be something that the zoning board could look at as a, I'm going to, you know, it's a different case of going in for a building permit. My lot is smaller, previously platted out. And this would enhance the size, whether this could be looked at at the, by the zoning board for potential approval. Because my challenge is survey won't once more define before he can stamp a drawing if, if this road is determined to be bisected, it's a lot. So that's kind of where I see it.
Okay. In, I guess where we are with the planning board, and I think we've committed this in the past, is we have obtained legal opinions. And, you know, it is not the intent to have two parcels divided by this roadway. And the, it would mean, you know, lot line adjustment across a roadway because it is now a town road. And the, it, because the added lot would not be two acres, because you're, it's still going to be sub two acres, it would still not meet the zoning requirements for that buildable lot. So you could, I mean, we would not be able to approve it without those zoning variances for the full lot. Now, also, it is not a good planning sense to have a lot that's then subdivided by, or bisected by a roadway. In the town roadway, you know, you'd have just, in this case, we've talked about this in the past a lot, of having a parcel of land on both sides of the road. Now, it happens, there are a lot of occurrences in and around this area where that does happen. But this would be the first case where we would, and we meaning the board in the town, have to think about, we're going to create a new lot with that same condition. So we would have a lot with a town road in the middle. And that, so far, has not been very good planning sense to do that for, for a number of reasons. So that's been the legal opinions that we've received.
Because I was curious, I'm, as you're aware, I'm like the fifth applicant that put in for a lot line from the same master property. So the town was able to, you know, those were already done prior. So those could be severed by the road and made two separate. But as an applicant, I can't.
Yeah, previously, it was, it was designated as a, you know, it was a private piece of property.
Yep.
And since the citizens have voted that those ways are now town roads. So that would mean it's now a lot bisected by a town road. But what this application is asking to do is create a new lot that is then bisected by the, by the road. So that, and it's non-conforming.
But it's one continuous slot with just.
But from a planning perspective, the town road bisects it because you can't count contiguous area on one side, or contiguous area on the other side of the road. You have to look at them as two, you might technically own the land underneath, but from what our regulation has contiguous area.
So the existing property, its roads cut through it, so it's all, it's now subdivided?
Well, the existing property, it still stands. I mean, it still stands as is. It has, but, but they're not, there has been no proposals yet to subdivide that other parcel. There's no other subdivision or lot line adjustments prior, prior to the town voting those roads in.
Okay. I guess my question was whether it could be viewed by the zoning board for acceptance on a separate issue for building. I would probably go in front of them, I expect. And I was holding out and to not repeat multiple times, but adding this would increase my area to be able to build the home size I want, even though it would still be non-conforming, but I'm in a hardship condition. This was reducing it, so.
And this board would not hear those hardships? I mean, that is the zoning board that, I mean, yeah, the zoning board that would, would hear that and vote on that case?
Is there any way this team could push it or clear it to go to the zoning board?
That's something that's separate that you would have to do on your own.
Okay.
You have to make an application to that zoning board for the zone requirements that you're not meeting. It's probably not just one, or there are probably some other ones that you would need to have variances from.
So if I heard you correctly, you've, the town has determined that this finger of road, because there's multiple in other locations, but all those fingers are all town roads. They're not driveways, they're not spurs that are secondary, whether that's done or not, say town.
I can't say whether the fingers, what you're talking about, fingers. So all I can, all we can talk about is this specific application and the frontage that's in front of your, your proposed lot.
So I guess, if I may, he's the landowner and I'm.
Mr. Chairman, can I sit and have counsel?
Sure. You're a co-applicant to this, so.
Okay, there's, that's, that's a valid, so the current lot line adjustment was just to go to, there's a defined power line easement, so the lot line was adjusted to that. And that's how it came up, incidentally, of approximately .6 added. If that lot line gave me the full two acres, would that be considered, even though it's severed by the road? And we're talking this road, it's not 156, it's a whole lot.
It's a class five, it's now a class five road, class five, right? Yeah, so it's a class five.
So that's been determined, so you dedicate.
Are you asking if the two acre, the little piece essentially on the other side of the road, you're asking if that piece on the other side was increased to two acres?
Yep.
And the existing lot of the lake just stays whatever it is?
Not quite. If the added lot line adjustment equaled a total lot of two acres, was the first question.
Okay.
You'd have to take out the, the road calcula, out of that calculation.
Yeah, none of the road can count.
You can't calculate the road in part of that calculation. So you'd have to take, subtract the road and then add to this back parcel.
Okay, thank you.
That, that was a good question, because like I said, conveniently, right now, it's, it was based on the edge of the easement and the power line. I mean, what if it went beyond?
Your property custom lot line adjustment, which you for a parking lot today.
The tricky part, though, with that, whether you increase, whatever you increase it by, currently Lamprey Drive sits off basically the rear of the existing lot, right? It's kind of, the rear lot line, Lamprey Drive essentially goes parallel, parallels that rear lot line, right?
It would be a real lot line of 70-25.
Yeah, so whether you move, add area to the other side or not, currently as it stands, if you have the existing lot and you have Lamprey Drive and you look at it, whether it's the easement corridor, that's the town road per se, and there's, that currently abuts essentially that lot. No matter what land you add on the other side of the road, you're still creating that condition of a lot area over here and a lot area over there. So you still have the disconnect issue, I mean.
Understood. We were just picking up on the comment of two acres.
I mean, you could build on the other side.
Yeah, you could, you could.
You could build on the other side.
You could get two acres of land on the other side, a build on the other side.
And you still have water access, you just cross the road to get.
So that poses the next question. If he was to subdivide off of, off of 70-25, can I subdivide him half an acre on the other side of that road as a separate parcel? That would not be conformal. It would not be a residential, it'd be, he'd put a, put his barn over there. In other words, what's the smallest subdivision property that is allowed?
Two acres.
Two acres.
Two acres, even if it's not, if it's deemed non, non-buildable.
It's a, it'll, we don't do that. You have to have a buildable lot. If you're going to subdivide, it needs to be a buildable lot, so.
Okay, we needed to know that.
Yeah. I think we have, so to do that, there's a lot of changes that would be need to make to the application.
And I think we would need additional opinion if the application would change to, or something like that.
Right. So, were you going to say something, Charlie?
No, I'm just wondering, I'm kind of thinking, should we deny this as presented?
So there's two, I guess there's two, there's two avenues here. More than likely, we would, we would deny this. The other option here would be to withdraw your application, revise that application or resubmit it. I don't think there's harm in either one.
Right.
We're not, we're not in a case where you get denied a subdivision, you can't subdivide it. It's just, it would come back as a different subdivision. Regardless, you still will have to, if it's withdrawn and revised, you'll still have to re-notify all of the abutters, because it's been, since May of 2021, since any of the abutters have been notified. And they have been showing up at meetings, and they have been asking about when this is being heard. So that's why we asked you to come to this meeting specifically, so we can, you know, get, get a direction on it, so.
The clarity that I needed was, in one part, is, there's certain ways that town encaped the road in that particular section, whether it's defined as a driveway or, or was it part of Lamprey, because it was never really developed and used that way before. Because the dedication period that's stated was expired unless he dedicated it. So it was seeing how it was acquired.
Yes.
Is that just a vote?
So we're seeing, the town is seeing that portion as a class five road, what the town has right away. I guess I would reiterate for this applicant and all applicants for this, it is just not good planning to have a lot on two sides of the road, especially when you're, you're.
It wasn't when we applied.
Considering it as one lot.
Yeah, it wasn't when we applied, well, it's.
Understood, yeah, yeah.
Also, I remember the last time, but I know Chris, the town manager, since I think even this application was submitted, has put together a substantial amount of information. I know he's, a lot of people have come in with questions about mapping of the roads. He's gone through a pretty substantial effort to get more information. So I don't, if you haven't checked in with him, he has, I know he's, he's done a lot to get more information on the limits of those roads, to a lot of research.
I know it was plowed, so I know that to get consideration.
That was one of the criteria, yeah, it was one of the criteria.
It was probably really plowed, not by the town.
So, I mean, we are to the point where we either need to, well, we need to make a decision.
Yep.
So I'll just leave it to you.
I thought the delay was really the town too, had to establish positions.
Understood, yeah, we had some continuances in there. Kevin, do you mind just stating your name, that, because we just didn't get it?
Kevin Bassett, 101 Shore Drive, I own Lamprey Drive, tax map 70, lot 25.
Great, thank you. Just wanted to make sure we have it all.
If I may, you know, there may be a consideration that there is a hardship. His application was put in before the town vote, there was a delay, so he couldn't be heard before the town votes, it was delayed another month. And thus, he's in the position that he's in. What is the procedure for him to go to the zoning board? Is that through Dale? How does he make that application to the zoning board? If, if he's felt that he has a hardship?
He can make it through Kevin. He can just make an application through Kevin.
Understood.
Yep.
Just make a standard application, and that comes up during the hardship portion of.
There's five criteria.
There's five criteria to standing.
Does the zoning board have the facts that this portion of Lamprey Drive is a, in fact, a town road? Do they have that information?
Yeah.
Do you have that information?
We've been provided the information that it is, whether.
So, so we would just make sure that they have that information.
We've been at least told that for this application, this piece of road that we're looking at for this application is.
And just, just making sure that it's now cut and dried, it is, and it won't.
They'll have their own questions.
Could I get a copy, because he's the owner, and he doesn't have a copy of that determination?
Actually, the copy we received was from, wasn't the copy we received from Kevin?
Yeah. I, I mean, I don't know where it came from, but we have it. I mean, isn't that, that's the, actually, the determination from the town. I mean, the town made those determinations that those roads are the class five roads, right, John?
Yeah.
So that's the determination. It was in the Warren Arco that got passed.
I get me those back to Chris, in terms of like visualizing it.
But the question is, that town, that part of the road was never plowed by the, by the town?
This isn't the place to argue it, is what I'm saying. We don't have.
Why is it, why is it Lamprey Drive? It was, is the baseline question. So if it's already been established, that's all it was asked. Lamprey Drive goes eight ways, and a road does not go eight ways. So if it's deemed that that little piece is now Lamprey and the other pieces are not, then that makes perfect sense to me.
So I guess if you can make a motion.
Can you continue?
Denial.
Deny, deny.
And we need to provide a reason which.
I think we got it.
So he does not wish to withdraw.
I've provided them that option, and they haven't spoken up, so.
On the, on the option, I'm sorry, for withdrawing?
Yes.
Did you want to withdraw or?
It doesn't affect your ability to submit to the zoning board?
No, I'll, I'll let the vote.
Okay. Yeah, I mean, if, if the specific reason would be, you know, that it doesn't meet the zoning requirements, that it's bisected by the roadway.
Do we have a requirement that if we deny, there's a certain period of time we can't come back, unless it's substantially changed?
Yeah, unless it's substantially changed, which would need to be substantially changed, or we'll deny it again.
So it's better for the applicant to withdraw, then there's no penalty?
He said we were, he was willing for us to make a vote. So I'd like to have a motion for dis, in its disapproval, not denial.
Disapproval? I'll make a motion that we disapprove case number 21-010-LLA as a non-conforming lot with a road running through it, class five road running through it.
A second.
Motion is second, goes in favor of the disapproval, indicate aye. Goes opposed, so that's unanimous.
Hey, thank you.
Yeah.
Good luck. Is this for the four lot? Did you print it out yourself?
No, this came in the, did you forget your mail? Here, I'll leave it right here, how about that?
Thank you, you're right.
I thought I had it on my computer too, it's the only one I didn't put on my computer.
I never even, probably got the mail.
Be some prepared.
Why don't you say that louder in the microphone? You're probably going to smack.
All right, the next, the next case on the agenda is case 22002SUV, an application from Concrete Products of Londonderry requesting a four-lot subdivision. The property is located at 100 Smoke Street in Nottingham, is identified as tax map 11, lot three. The applicant is here. Just would like to initially hear from staff that we have the information in front of us, right? We have all of the, all of the application materials. Great, thank you. If you could just announce yourself and let us know what the plan is, and give us some descriptions.
Yes, sir. I'm Gregory Boyd with Millennium, I'm representing Prime, Londonderry. I have to apologize, I'm unfamiliar with your process here, it's my first time in Prime View, so be easy on me.
Be easy on everyone.
The last one just got denied. I'm from Cleveland, I'm too far from the saltwater to be unkind. I did get, I understand that this may be a player's name.
Yeah.
I did get players report to briefly, this is pretty straightforward. It is a large lot, it's 35.4 acres on Smoke Street. There's about 900 feet of frontage on the parcel. The plan set that we provided for you is made up of four sheets. The intention is, once approved, that sheet one would be the reporting sheet at the registry, which shows the lots. Each of the lots is at least five acres or larger, and most of them are larger than five acres. Lot one would be five acres. Lot two, 15.4 acres, 7.0 acres, and then 7.9 acres for lot four. They all have the requisite frontage. On this sheet, we've shown the wetlands mapping, one of the things that I was looking at today, although that we do show that North West had flagged the wetlands, and we cite that on a later sheet, I think that would be important to be added to this sheet as well. I noticed that. One other thing that I noticed as well is that, even though I stamp this, I miss things once in a while, that the contiguous lot areas, I mean, we've shown those areas, however, lot one has an entire contiguous lot area, as well as lot two. Lot three and lot four are bisected. So there's separate contiguous lot areas, one to the north on each, and one to the south. And I would recommend to myself and suggest to you that I would like to add those to the final plan that gets recorded. And just so you know, these acre, these areas down here, south of the wetland area are about two acres apiece, and then north of it, they're about three acres, four acres or more. So I would suggest adding to that, if we could move to the second sheet, which is much cleaner, simply a perimeter survey of the entire parcel. It has a clean sheet with that area calculation and showing the wetland edge and then the setbacks. For a lot of times, it's nice to have that parcel.
Keep one of them, not the same.
The third sheet is our existing conditions plan, which shows not only the boundary that I just showed you, but the topographic relief. You'll look out here, and this could be a study in topography, it's, it's amazing that the relief in the ground. We go from about elevation 166 down at the Little River area here, to over elevation 200. So there's a significant change in elevation to this. We do have about 200, 2,000 feet of frontage on the Little River that is going to be mostly belong to lot four. On the fourth sheet, we actually, even though these five acres are larger, in the state of New Hampshire, if you create a lot less than five acres in size, you need prior subdivision approval from the New Hampshire DES before we could come to this board. But each lot is at least five acres, as I explained to begin with. But we've also done witness test kits. So these test kits on each of the lots were witnessed by the town agent. We've also shown that we can fit the 75-foot well radius that's required. And the intention is to leave the backland as it is and to. And the intention is to leave the backland as it is, and to build up in the front. So, there'll be a great deal of this land that really is preserved in the future. We're not proposing an easement per se on the, on the lots, but obviously, if they're building houses here, they have a minimum requisite frontage, and there is no ability really to divide back there. So, the intent is, as shown on sheet one, would be to have those buildable areas on this side of that first wetland crossing. So, there's not going to be a need for wetlands crossing, or any impact to the wetlands. We do understand that the lot is within the aquifer area, so when we go for building permits in the septic design process, we will look at the town's regulations and make sure that impervious area or any drainage controls that are required for those permits are obtained. With that, I'll stand and ask any questions, just to make out.
Okay, I'd like to turn it over to Blair just to summarize the review.
All right, yeah, so the application does appear complete, it does appear to have all the minimum standards for what we require in the submittal. Yeah, he gave a, the gentleman gave a pretty thorough explanation, so I won't go over like, you know, the project summary. But it does appear to be something that the board can accept, this, the application. They're not requesting any waivers, and as he mentioned, there do not appear to be any additional permits from the state that are involved. I did ask a couple of questions in the comments section, you know, about crossing the wetland in particular. Do they anticipate any structures or driveways, or other disturbance that require going across the wetland area? And then, to that same point, is lot two, given the rather significant size of its back area, is that subject to further subdivision? For example, like a potential back lot? And then the other one was within the aquifer protection district, requires you to meet designs, design and performance standards, that's part of the zoning for that area. You know, are there means and methods in place by the applicant to ensure these standards are met? It talks about, particularly with the septic, so just, you know, what would be that process? Don't need a long exhaustive explanation, but just making sure that we, you know, we're prepared for that, the town is prepared for that. So, yeah, beyond that, you know, there was a pretty, pretty standard subdivision off of an existing roadway.
Okay, at this point, we would need a motion for completeness.
Mr. Chairman, I move that case number twenty-two dash zero zero two dash S U B as complete.
Motion is second by Ian, any other discussion? Goes in favor, indicate aye, goes opposed? Okay, so now that we've accepted that application, we can kind of get into a little bit more of the meat of it, although you did a very good job of explaining it. I think we probably do have a couple of questions.
Do you want to get the other one out of the way?
Yeah.
Yeah, do that, please.
I'll make a motion that, what's that case number? Case number two-two dash zero zero two dash S U B is not a project of regional impact.
A second.
Motion and a second, those in favor, indicate aye. So, it is not a regional impact, so then we will go ahead to the presentation by the applicant, which we had in the staff review. So, we have some questions, I have some anyway, and I think you may have answered them, but the, the upland area, kind of south of those wetlands.
Yeah.
And you said it's about one acre, or two acres, or?
About two, two point one acres each, I calculate, had them calculated before I got here, because I thought that would be a question that I had, that you might have as well, so.
Did you take a look at that number without the setbacks?
No, that is just a contiguous area, irrespective of the setbacks.
I mean, I think it looks like you'll probably make the thirty thousand.
Yeah, that was my, yeah, they're kind of beaten too, I think that we need to check the contiguous upland, contiguous upland area. In our subdivision regulations, under the definition for lot envelope.
Yep.
The thirty thousand minimum, it exclude, it has to be the upland buildable soil area, so, and it has to exclude areas unfit for building, which would be the setbacks. One thing that I would like to point out on here too, it's basically work your way in wetland setbacks building, but anywhere that is less than fifty feet wide between those constrictions, that's your cutoff point.
Understood.
So, we don't get that hourglass effect.
Just so you know, and not to interrupt, but the exact calculations are, lot three is ninety, that three thousand square feet. This is the upland area, and those will be added to the plan. So, I don't honestly know what that is, if we would have cut the setbacks out, but I would have to believe that that is at least a third of that ninety-three thousand square feet. And the other area is ninety thousand one hundred and ninety-six square feet, so there again, I'm sure we have the thirty, but we will. In fact, we would add, that's an interesting way that you do it, we work in about sixty-five different towns, but that's an interesting regulation, so we can actually add that to the plan as well, what the building envelope area is.
Yep.
Yeah, and one thing, that's a good point, because the lots I pointed, I was looking at are lot one and lot four, so for example, lot one's the easier one. Because you work your way back, and you work around that corner, and you get the build, yeah, so that's, I think that's less than fifty, so it's basically wherever you hit that fifty foot separation, that's your cutoff, and everything south of that, whatever that is, that's your contiguous, or your contiguous. So, and yeah, sometimes people will just show a bold line or something.
Right.
And it helps us at least.
Well, we can, we can add another one line here to do that as well.
But I do think you, I think you're still fine on the thirty thousand.
Yeah, I think so.
That's the only thing that I came right to the top of my head.
I have one more, two more. I just want to point out, in terms of monumentation, we will need to just show additional monuments, every three hundred feet is our requirement.
Okay.
So, as you work your way back, obviously, some of those lot, longer lot lines, we'll just work on a three hundred foot separation.
I'd be okay with the intermediate monuments being iron rods as opposed to the stone?
And then the other thing I had was, just because it looks like we might need to just see some revisions, is if you've contemplated any driveway locations?
Well, in this case, there's really only so many places that they can go. And honestly, the reason we didn't show them at this point is because it's the same, some of the towns, that my own town, requires building locations. It's like, I hate it because you show something, and that's not what's going to be built. Because we don't know the style of the house, the location of the house, and as long as it can fit within the building setback to meet the other setbacks, there is some flexibility that Orlando has, so, but as far as the driveway, there's a couple of different places that it could go on each of the lots, so I was reluctant to do that. When we go for septic approval, the state requires us to show those, so I can show it, but it may just be a matter of showing something for the sake of showing it, and what it's not really going to be there. But if you want us to show something, we can, we generally know where they're going to be, because we'd like to fold them into the topography, and the easier the cut. One of the challenges on building these lots is because of the topographic relief, it's, it's, some of the places, it's, if not extreme, closer, you know.
Yeah, we would like you to show them, even if they are going to get revised at some point, because we just want to make sure that, that, you know, it's the proper place, as you say, topography, and that it can be accomplished, but also, you know, its location relative to the adjacent lot.
Understood.
You know, sometimes on lots such as these, they'll, there'd be, might be an advantage to have a shared driveway. We just need to know that, whether that's contemplated in this case, if it's not, then, and they're going to be separate individual driveways. We just want to make sure we have that on the.
We can just be shown as dashed lines going fifty feet into the lot.
We can do that, it doesn't necessarily need to be on the sheet to be recorded, though, that's something that I wouldn't want to do.
No, that's fine.
People get it in their mind that it has to be there.
Well, I think too, with Sean, our road agent, when you go to pull a driveway permit.
Yeah.
He will sometimes pull the plan and just see if what the applicant is coming forward with lines up.
Understood, understood, thank you.
I actually have one more, and then that's it. Did, obviously, it's a little hard for me on that scale to see, did you check for twenty-five percent slopes? There's obviously some pretty large knolls in there, topographic, I just want to make sure we did check for twenty-five percent slope, because that also would have to be excluded from any buildable area that counts towards that thirty thousand square feet. It's just hard, it's just hard to tell from the scale.
Right, honestly, I would have to check with one of my guys that did the actual design, or we can run those calculations and see.
Yeah, that'd be good, I just fear why you guys are updating that contiguous, that's, those front areas are some of the areas that look like they have contours, so that's something to check. And if there are, it's nice to have those areas hatched, so that we can, again, kind of see where those are.
Any other members with some questions?
Yeah, yeah, well, I have a comment to make. I noticed that the Little River courses through this property, and I would hope that you and the applicant, and also the prospective purchasers of this property, would realize that the Little River falls under the river management program as a first order stream, and be familiar with chapter four eighty-three, colon seven dash A, for the management of this particular stream.
Can you cite that again?
I will, yeah, four eighty-three, colon seven, dash A, river classification criteria management, and it's a couple pages. And also, it's a named river, which is four eighty-three, colon fifteen. Little River as a rural river from immediately downstream of the Mendons Pond Dam in Nottingham to the confluence with the Lamprey River in Lee, which is also a protected watershed.
We can even put a note on the plan, we will quote that the, the layowners are to be familiarized themselves with that.
That would be very nice.
Absolutely.
And it's not just for the purity of the river and the watershed, but also habitat for the critters that live there, thank you.
I just had a couple of questions, the wetlands delineation that West Environmental did, is that, was that recently, or was that prior?
It was recent, in fact, the date of the survey, so it was between, it was after March of two thousand twenty, so, twenty March two thousand twenty, August two thousand twenty, so it's within, within two years.
And then I know in two thousand and ten, the, the owner did a commercial soil stripping, and I didn't know if, and I think it's kind of in the lot three, four area, I didn't know if, you might want to check to see if the state requires a reclamation, any kind of reclamation plan of that.
I'll have to check on that, I want to say something that I'm not aware of.
And then, the other thing is, I know it's in a floodplain, typically, we like to see kind of where that floodplain is.
I do too, it's before the meeting, I'm thinking, did we show the floodline on here? Because it is partially, it's not entirely, but it's partially on there, so one of the things that I suggested for myself to add was that floodplain on.
And I also believe that we, we recommend language in the deed in relation to the aquifer protection district that, that the parcel lies in that.
Do you have a, any boiler pit plate language that you've put in the past that you're in favor of?
We do not.
No?
Not that I know of.
Yeah, I don't know of any.
In recent subdivisions that would contain it, will we look at the deeds?
We had, what about the one over on Ford Farm, that was an aquifer.
Yep.
Yeah, also West Pond. Partially, partially.
We'll do some digging and.
Yeah, it'll be good.
And a member was making reference to the zoning ordinance, where it lists out certain things that can't be done.
Yeah, and when we have time, we can, we can add them to that recorded sheet, so they're aware of it, they can be cited within the deed. I like to do that, because if the deed references the plan, it's all encompassing, and it includes what's on the plan as well.
Was this lot the old gravel pit?
I don't know.
Yes.
Yeah.
It was the old gravel pit, right?
Yes.
Okay, just making sure I'm familiar with which lot that.
Yeah, that's why I questioned whether or not they need a reclamation plan from the state.
Well, I mean, in the attachment, there is a reclamation plan.
Is there?
Yeah, in, in the attachment A.
Oh, in the hydrolog.
In the hydrological study, yeah, there's a reclamation plan, it's already there.
I didn't catch that.
And, you know, as a part of the aquifer protection, you know, providing some of this, this study information is, is really good. I know in some cases, it's a little dated, it's, when was this done, ten years ago?
Well, yeah, the first, the original one was done even longer.
Nineteen ninety-four was some of the.
Yeah, was the, yeah.
But in this case, where we have just four single family lots, and it's a very small use to it.
Also, where the state will ultimately review test pits everywhere for the.
Yes.
And we did, so you know, I mentioned that, but just to reiterate, those test pits, the intention is to be upon, those are all passable test pits.
Okay, what I'd like to do now is just open it for a public hearing, to get any public comment. If, I'll open the public hearing, if there's anybody in the public who would like to speak to, for, or against this application, feel free to come up to the table, state your name, and we'd love to hear her input. Anybody in public would like to speak, sure.
I don't know, is there any other abutters to this property at all? I didn't think so, I'm him. So, my name's Kevin Nor, I'm the owner of ninety Smoke Street, right next door. I've had several communications, and actually have met with Greg Stratus, from the president of Londonderry Concrete Products slash Shee Concrete. We had come to some agreement that obviously didn't happen, or like you had said when we spoke briefly, this might not be finalized, to create some buffer, because at the lowest part, yeah, so that's me right there, this is the narrowest, the narrowest spot on my property. I moved out here from Portsmouth to get away from, you know, the hustle and the bustle, as a lot of people have. And in the last five to seven years, there's been hit and runs right on Smoke Street, people peeling out constantly, people shooting in their lots over here, but they were nice enough to put, when I talked to Greg and other folks there, to put up no trespassing signs. And all of this, amongst the traffic and everything else, and the other developments going on between Fort Hill, Smoke, and West Mill Pond, it's getting ridiculous, and I'm just trying to, I'd like to see that some of the property owners that have been here for a while get the opportunity to at least talk to developers about building some green area, or some buffer. Or not only sound and visual, but in the, in the example of people that moved in next to me, we've got three roosters now, and they've got sheep out the wazoo, and I have to deal with someone coming out and screaming every thirty minutes all day long, and the smell of manure all the time. I'm just afraid that this is going to happen again. I don't want to stop them, I think that when you own the property, you should be able to do what you can do with your property within reason. But it shouldn't adversely affect the quality of life and people around it, or the value of the property. So, this is just my opinion to come up and say this, I will still go back. I will still go back to Mr. Stratus and hopefully we can work out something where I can buy a parcel of that to build that, that buffer. But as that sits right there, it's not there. So I just wanted to state that.
Okay.
Two hundred?
Thank you.
Just two hundred. Yeah, they've got pretty much just two hundred on each one.
Any other abutters or not abutters that would like to speak to, for, against this application? Okay, hearing none. I'll keep the public hearing open and bring it back to the board. I think there's some information we'd like to get back from you. And then certainly reconvene. You know, have, make sure staff is, is understanding of what this application is. We haven't heard anything back yet from anybody internal. So I want to make sure they have full time to review this information. And then, so I would think we'd probably just continue it until the next time.
When, when would your next meeting be, sir?
Twenty-third.
Would you be able to get information? Some of it sometimes is, can you get us information in time for the next meeting? Or would you like?
How much time do you need, I guess is what I'm saying, because I, we can run these calculations with a pair or two, so.
Well, and I'd have to defer to Kevin to see how our schedule is.
We have room for, I mean, next week, I think we're fine for it.
Okay.
So then I'll reach out to the department, see if they can, we'll see.
The more you try, the more it doesn't work. That's what I have found.
So did you say the twenty-third?
Twenty-third.
Yeah, I'm actually in, for some of the, you meet every two weeks, then?
Yes.
But not.
But we do not meet the first week in March. The first meeting in March because of town vote. So the meeting after that would be March twenty-third, so.
Well, can we say the twenty-third and I can have a standard and if that doesn't work, we can give you.
Of March or February?
Of February.
Okay. Yes.
And ideally, we like to have stuff a week ahead of time, but it sounds like you guys will be.
Yeah, I, I, I wouldn't do that to you and give it to you if I know how that is, so.
Okay, great. Yes.
I'll make a motion to continue case number two-two dash zero-zero-two dash S U B to the February twenty-third meeting at seven P M.
Second.
Second motion. Anybody else have any discussion? Those in favor indicate aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, that's unanimous. So we'll continue it until the twenty-third. Thank you very much.
I appreciate your time.
Yep.
Have a good night. Did you catch his name? B O Y D?
Okay, that concludes our public hearings. For other business, the first item is a design review for subdivision for Owl Ridge Builders on Smoke Street. If that applicant would, or, yeah, applicant would come forward.
Mr. Chair, so I've worked with Kevin a little bit this afternoon. I think it might be easier for the presentation if I just plug in, if that's okay with everybody?
Yep, that's good.
Sorry about that.
Got a lot of what drawings.
All right, well, I apologize for not having a board. I thought this would work better for everybody in the room. But I'll proceed. So we met a few months back. My name is Christopher Berry. I'm with Berry Surveying and Engineering representing Owl Ridge Builders. Here this evening. And we met as a design review with one meeting prior to this. What the applicant is proposing to do is provide a yield plan for consideration and then convert that yield plan to an open space subdivision, in an open space subdivision design. Some of the feedback that we received at the last design review had to do with some of the layout and the yield plan itself. And then much of the input that we received from the abutting landowners had to do with access onto Fort Hill Road and the impact that that may have on that particular area, the subdivision. And so we've gone back.
Chris, you are getting some.
Oh, great.
You're welcome.
Kevin's magic.
Thank you. So this is good because I wanted to point out specifics areas that we've modified based on our prior conversation. So a few of the comments at the prior design review meeting had to do with specifically a few of the lots in the yield plan in this general area here. The building areas that were shown for a few of these lots were shown at the back of some steep slope areas. And it was pointed out that they may or may not be considered conforming lots for your, per your regulations. And so we've removed one of the lots in that area and essentially reshuffled the entire deck around that entire section of the proposed or the conceptual roadway. Just to bring a couple of you up to speed, there is a class, well, it really has no class, but there is a laid out town road called Summer Street that sort of bisects this piece of property. And I would just point out, and I've pointed out in some of the notes in the plan, that none of those, we owe the fee to Summer Street, the land under the physical roadway. The road was laid out on top of this piece and therefore we've not counted any of that roadway or Summer Street as land area that we could take credit for in either one of the proposed plans that we show here. Additionally, we pointed out at the last planning board meeting that some of the sites, this middle section here, per your online maps, is in the aquifer zone. It's green in the areas that were, on the plans that were provided for you in color. It's a little hard to see on the screen there, but this, essentially this center area in green is the aquifer zone. What that means is that the underlying lot that's created inside of that zone or if it touches that zone has to be three acres in size. At the prior planning board meeting, we essentially had two hundred scale plans, which was hard to review in any sort of detail. And so we put together a better view of that same yield plan in two different cuts so that you could see that each one of the lots has two hundred feet of frontage, has two acres in lot size or three acres, as it might be in the aquifer zone. And we went so far as to calculate out where the thirty thousand square feet would be free of unbuildable area, meaning setbacks, free of unbuildable slopes twenty-five percent. And any areas less than fifty feet in width have been removed from that. A few of the lots, you may notice, have plus or minus on them. And it's just because I wasn't able to intricately get the exact number based on some of the steep slope areas, but I wanted to make sure that they were at least in excess of thirty thousand square feet. Again, this is the yield plan. This is to demonstrate the number of units that would be possible in a reasonably laid out conceived subdivision. And so this minimizes wetland impacts, crosses the wetlands in two locations in the most narrow spots, topographically in the better locations, tries to minimize buffering tracks to the same wetland areas that we're trying to avoid. Additionally, at the last planning board meeting, there was discussion primarily on the development plan that we were running a road down the abutting landowner's parcel. And it was preferred on the development plan that that be flipped to the other side. And so we looked at that in the same light on the development or the yield plan and moved that road to the other side of the property where currently there's a utility easement there, an overhead utility easement. The abutting land owner has a house further from the boundary line than the opposite landowner does. And thought that it would be a good exercise to go through seeing what the yield plan might look like with the road moved in both scenarios and locations. So taking that yield or modifying that yield plan, we went from twenty-six lots down to twenty-five lots on the yield plan. And then in the open space development design, take those same twenty-five units and do an open space subdivision. The last plan had three roads designed or shown, both two off from Smoke Street and then one off from Fort Hill. What the applicants and I have looked at is doing two lots off from Fort Hill Road. That would be a shared driveway. Those lots, we would request a conditional use permit to, from the planning board to less than one hundred feet of frontage. So they would share the small neck there and then have a shared driveway out to two larger building envelopes. Those two building envelopes are larger than forty-five thousand square feet. And so we would also ask for a conditional use permit to have two more brandyos lots in the subdivision in that one area. Again, as I mentioned, on the, on the south side of, the south side of the project off of Smoke Street, we moved the road to the other side of the property. And then once we gain access to the inside developable area, we then have the one hundred foot buffer that sort of generates the outside perimeter of the lots and sort of carry that theme around. Again, each one of those lots, one or two of them is in excess of forty-five thousand square feet, so a conditional use permit would be required. But those are in areas that, or on lots that really, for instance, this neck really isn't overly developable or buildable. And so the lot area itself is increased, but the building area is approximately the same size as it would be in an open space subdivision lot. And then, as we pointed out at the last planning board meeting, what the applicant intends to do is there's an escar of material here at the center of the site. As part of that major subdivision application, that escar would be removed from the material removal process and then either used on this particular roadway here and then likely used on the southern roadway also. So the intent would be to utilize that material on site. I think if you can read the, some of the notes and text, after I was finished and woke up the next day, you know, there were some additional things that I, additional improvements that I thought could be made to the plan. So for instance, these two lots, I'll go to a better view here. These two lots off the end of the cul-de-sac, I think, I think reorienting this cul-de-sac just a little bit and maybe putting those building areas further down slope away from this steeper slope area is probably better for the design, better for the overall open space development. Again, each one of these lots is proposed to back right up to Summer Street, not cross into it at all. And therefore the land areas are not accredited towards, or that land area is not accredited towards the building areas at all. We tried to think about low impact development stormwater systems and where they would be placed. And so the first lot on the right side of the road alignment is pushed back quite a ways to leave some room for some stormwater best management practices here in the lower corner. Topographically, that's the best spot for a large portion of the site. And then I would imagine that, again, some sort of low impact development device would be placed off the back of the site as it heads down to the Little River. I think the advantages to this project over the former project design is there's one less road, so there's less impervious surface, there's less construction, there's less alteration. There is considerable more consideration to, I think I used the same word twice there, sorry. There's more consideration for perimeter buffering. So we, in the area against the Little River subdivision, one hundred feet was the minimum that we used. We tried to create the lots around the remaining topographic features there and in many cases, it's a little bit greater than one hundred feet. We tried to ensure that the lots that would be created after the escar removal were all large usable lots, even though they are reduced lot sizes. And not sort of try and cram and pack them in there. And then the best, in my opinion, the best feature of this subdivision is the large amount of open space that remains as part of the project when it's complete. We have, currently, we have no wetlands impact. And we would continue to try and design the road hard not to have a wetland impact. We have two small areas where we would cross through the fifty foot buffers. But I would point out that these are non-critical wetlands as the zoning ordinance was modified and adopted. And we looked, we looked at the, the areas of impact pretty hard before we placed the roadway for consideration for subdivision. So all in all, the applicants are happier with this design and I guess we hope you are also. We'd like to take any input that you have and the abutters might have so that we could end the design review process tonight and then we'll maybe move to full design.
Thank you for that explanation. I think you have addressed a number of the concerns that were brought up at the previous design review. I'll just start with a couple of questions. The yield plan. Do you happen to know what the average lot size is? You just average them out?
I don't have it calculated. If I had to guess, the average lot size is well over three acres.
Yeah, I would, I was kind of leading that in the point that, you know, we have a two acre minimum. And these are much bigger than our minimums. So usually, in this kind of case, we, we often have a negotiation period where we try and get them a little bit larger. But appreciate the effort of making sure you're looking at all of the natural features with the yield plan. And I.
Important note, too, is actually any, it looks like any of the lots that touch the aquifer though are three acres. So they did do a good job, even if it's partially in the aquifer. You guys held up three acres for that.
And I guess I'd ask the same thing. I'd probably get the same question or the same answer, are the averages of the lots for the?
You know what it says?
For, for the other size. Those look more, more also larger than the minimums.
They, they are. And that's actually something we wanted to discuss with the board because your, as I pointed out in my presentation, we would intend to ask for conditional use permits to actually increase those lot sizes. Your zoning ordinance prescribes a minimum and it prescribes a maximum, but can be modified by C U P. I think in this particular case, given the vast amount of open space that we can provide and again, some of the lots, to get to the more suitable and nice building areas, they have some odd unbuildable shapes. And so I think it's appropriate in that case to increase the lot size. Additionally, the applicants, I think we all know, they live here, they know Nottingham very well. And they're also interested in making the lots as, as large and usable while keeping the spirit and ten of the open space subdivision sort of in mind. So that's, that's how we arrived at the lot sizes we did.
And the open space lot configuration for the two adjoining Fort Hill could, could. could, could those be standard lot sizes? I mean, I know you just obviously mentioned that we, there's a maximum. I mean, those almost lend themselves as, you know, their own individual standard lot size for that location.
Yes, yeah. It's the, they would still be considered open space lots because we would need the relief as part of the, for the frontage. But those two specifically, my applicants would really like those as large as allowable because they consider those, you know, the more stately lots in some-
Do you have enough open space to do that?
Yes.
That might be something to consider.
Okay.
I'm sorry, I, I was listening, but could you say that again? There, there was two lots you want to keep at a, you said stately size?
Yeah, a stately size.
So it'll be a residential lot, but it'll just be a grandiose one?
Yeah.
Well, it'll just be bigger lots than-
Big lots.
Than, we have maximums in our open space.
Yep.
So they would like them larger than the maximum.
Okay, yeah, I just, I just wanted to clarify. I haven't really dealt in much into your open space.
But still on the aquifer, so they have to be a minimum of three.
Yep.
Well, no, they'll have to be a minimum of-
Thirty.
Thirty thousand. And because, for the open space.
Yeah, because they now fall under open, if-
They, they fall, they would fall under open space, which they would have-
So they're not separate from-
One point five, I don't even know. I don't know the minimum for that.
It's thirty thousand and then forty-five thousand is prescribed maximum.
Okay.
So I would think if you, if you have enough open space for the rest of that, the number of lots, then potentially those ones, it'd be better if they are bigger. It just would also blend in with the-
The other lots.
Fort Hill along, the other lots along Fort Hill. I mean, it would be basically two houses versus a through road on the yield plan.
Right.
With a shared driveway.
Two houses with a shared driveway.
Exactly.
Stately houses.
Not in ham houses.
Stately houses.
Columns, everything.
Columns. Do we have any input from the board or questions or?
The other question is more of a procedure one for us. Chris mentioned the under the conditional use being able, can we waive the frontage? I was just looking to see, I know we could, it mentioned specifically, I'm just trying to find it.
Yeah, I read it.
I know we can waive the lot area, that's adjustable.
So your ordinance is written a little oddly because it says basically here, or ahead of where it says here are all the rules, ahead of that in the zoning ordinance, it says the planning board can modify these rules by conditional use with these three or four or five criteria in mind. And then the odd part of that is below where it talks about lot area, it then reiterates that lot sizes can be modified again by conditional use. And then the ordinance goes on to talk about the encouragement of creative design and working with the board to ensure that an open space subdivision is created enough to utilize natural features and goes on to say that you can have odd shapes and sizes and things of that nature.
Yeah, I know it's, you look at it as the order of how things are stated. It's repetition there, a lot of saying different ways.
Yeah. But I took all of that in, you know, you take all of that together, in my mind, it's permitted as long as it's requested specifically and granted by a conditional use permit.
And then I just had a question, I think you, I was looking something up, I think you said it. The, on the open space layout, the buffers, did you say that your, looks like via the scale, those generally greater than the one hundred feet, it looks like, or is that?
Yes, so I'll look at it incrementally. So the Little River subdivision, which is the northern part of the project, I essentially, a couple of you guys on the board would understand this terminology. So I offset this boundary line a hundred feet. And then I tried to draw a straight line from the, wherever that intersected one of my lots and then a straight line away from that hundred feet so that incrementally we were getting larger and larger as we got closer and closer to residential dwellings in that area. Obviously, we, we more than meet the one hundred feet at the front, just due to natural features. And then tried to keep the one-hundred-foot perimeter buffer around this corner, the less, less impact to the abutters in that area. And then on the southern side, again, and if the board will remember, we had the road running right here, which was adjacent to the closest abutting landowner. We've now flipped that to the other side so that it runs along the overhead utility easement that's there. And then we've tried to keep the minimum one-hundred-foot buffer to this perimeter here and this perimeter here also. And then going back to the Fort Hill side, again, this area here and this area most adjacent to the neighboring abutter, which is right here, is one hundred feet. So again, we've tried to force those building envelopes further back and away from abutting landowners.
And I do like that, especially the Fort Hill, because that essentially is unclearable land because it's part of your open space.
We were, we were cognizant not to use it as part of the lot, so it would discourage anybody from touching.
Yeah, I like to see that. And then I guess the only thing I thought of, obviously no others, you know, this will get weeded out and we can work and discuss if this comes back as a full application. I think I was the one that mentioned, I guess, what you call the south side, the one with the block twenty or something like that. So yeah, on the sheet you're on, just the, that cul-de-sac. I think I was the one that mentioned, you know, I've seen that road close to the other abutter. And I know it's shifted to the other side. This might be a discussion that I think is warranted among the board is possibly, is it, is it makes sense to consider reducing the buffer on, I guess that'd be the north side. From say, you know, say it's a hundred feet now, can we split the buffers to again pull, maybe give some separation of that road from the both of butters? Maybe something to look at, maybe you could consider too. So we're not kind of just flip-flopping it and affecting one abutter while we're not affecting the other. This might be something, it, it, it looks like, again, be a discussion because it's under the conditional use. We'd be potentially under the hundred foot, but maybe it looks like we could still be able to provide a decent buffer and still provide your lot areas, doesn't really look, it looks like it shifts every time. So maybe something to look at, I think, kind of get both the butters there some buffer.
Any other members want to?
Yes, Mr. Berry, I know that you are always thorough and due diligence, sorry, I can't talk tonight. Due diligence with getting information from the Natural Heritage Bureau and Fish and Game. I would be interested also if there might be special plant species on the escar, which is made of prime New Hampshire soils, that you have intended to use for your roadways. Could be just a little island of, of orchids or special trees.
So we haven't investigated that just yet, but we will.
I, I think that the Conservation Commission would like, with the permission or the direction of the planning board to take a look at some point.
You'll get your chance.
Thank you.
And as always, I'll be sure to come see you.
Thank you. Thank you.
If there's any other comments from the board, I will just ask if there's any abutters. Again, this is a, a non-binding, but it's a good informational process. If you'd like to come forward, just state your name. Just direct the information or questions towards me and then we'll just try and get some answers for you. So anybody in a butter want to talk about this application? And a part of the application process is this is kind of an initial stage. There will be a formal stage where the applicant will go back and provide a lot more of the detailed engineering with the storm drainage and the roadways and then provide a formal application to the planning board, which will go under a more detailed review process. And again, another notification to all of the abutters and the opportunity for abutters and anyone else to have their say in a public hearing. Anybody else want to take this opportunity? Yes, sir.
Jeff Glant, I live on Fort Hill Road. I would like to thank the applicant only as a, a butter on the Fort Hill side. I think this plan is much better than the last one. Reducing down to two lots makes more sense for all of us on Fort Hill Road at least. Can't speak for the other part of the project, but for us, I think that's good.
Great, thank you for that input. Anybody else? Okay, well, we'll conclude that designer review process. Yes?
I said one thought, it was actually, because I think I also wanted to bring up that escar that you were moving there for the material. I'm glad to see that essentially it looks like with the open space layout is, it's all contained on lots.
Yes.
So again, it preserves, I think there was some butters on Little River Road that were concerned about how close tree clearing would be. But again, that's a, I mean, at least from the scale, I'm seeing greater than a hundred-foot buffer back there. So I'm happy to see that layout, too.
So the disturbances overlap?
Yeah.
And there's no encroachment into what would be open space?
Yeah.
Okay, Mr. Berry, is that enough information?
Yeah, that's great for us. I think, correct me if I'm wrong, but I think the designer review process has to be formally closed by vote?
Yep, if somebody wants to make a motion to close the design.
I'll make a motion to close the design review process for the proposed Owl Ridge builder subdivision.
A second?
Motion in a second, those in favor, Nikki and I?
Aye.
Thank you. Good job, Kevin, on the IT. Thank you.
I think Kevin was holding out on the remote for the dramatic-
He wanted, yeah, he wanted it all dramatic.
Just unplug it.
Thanks again, have a good night.
Yeah, thank you.
Thank you.
The next, we change this a little bit into what's called conceptual review. Conceptual reviews are a little less informational. There's a little less, there's less need for a developed plan such as that amount of detail. So conceptual review could be a simple sketch, just an idea. So there might be a wide variety of different types of things we would look at with conceptual reviews. Those again are non-binding and getting the applicant some input from the board. So the first conceptual design review is the changed use for Raymond Road. And that is, which one is that?
This is the one that was actually, it's actually Route Four, Old Turnpike.
Okay, it's on Old Turnpike.
Change of use?
Zero, yeah, I don't understand the change of use, but we'll get to that, I guess.
I may have missed, I memorized it.
Okay.
Essentially a proposed site plan.
Yeah, it would be a proposed site plan. So if the applicants are here, how are you? Just state your name. Give us, we have some information, if you can just give us an idea of your planning and what you're thinking of doing with the property.
I'm Amy Kazik.
And Brent Kazik.
And we're here as part of our due diligence. So we have Adventure Camper Rentals as a company. We're looking for a place to have our business. And, and so we are going to be closing on the land soon. But it's part of, you know, depending on if we can do what it is that we want to do.
We love this piece of land because it seems like it's gone through a lot of this process where we just watched with the previous owner. And it's in the perfect location for us, for our business as well. Right on Route Four. And, you know, we were seeking a piece of commercially zoned property for that purpose. And what we'd like to do is build a three-bay garage with an office space in the back. And there is a site plan that we attached with our notice to you guys that has a well and a septic in there. And we, we propose to put that garage in that area as well.
So this is a subdivision that we saw not that long ago. Yeah, within the last year. And the backside is along Canard. And it's the, where the power line is and by Smoke Street. Right, by Smoke Street, yeah. And the residential developments along Canard. This was kind of a remainder parcel that was out on Route Four that was, you know, zone commercial. So, you know, this is something we saw not that long ago. And it sounds like, I, I do have a question of what, you know, what is the Adventure Camper business? Are you manufacturing campers? Are you selling them?
Yeah.
So, so we rent campers. So we buy only new, they're actually Forest River Wolf pups. We, right now, we have four, but we're on the way to probably six. And we started the business just back in April. We've been, we've, we've started with just one camper and now we-
It's rapidly growing.
It's rapidly growing and we're, we need to find a commercial space for it.
So customers, we either deliver them to people and most of our clients go to Maine, almost always, or Oscepee area. So therefore, we live in Northwood right now, but Nottingham, we wanted to get as close as we could to the coast. And it brought us to this piece of land. It made a lot of sense to us.
Shorter commute.
Yeah, I was gonna say, you want to throw a commute throughout and see the office.
Yeah, I mean, it's not bad, you know. We basically try to keep, we do deliveries, we try to keep them to less than a hundred miles. And a big portion of our business as well is customers come, some of our campers are very small. And so they come pick them up and they take them away. So it's both possible rentals. So that's what we loved about that is the proximity to sixteen or ninety-five.
Yeah, I mean, the use sounds really good there. Any other plans with that? So you've got, I know you attached a couple of building plans, which is great. We don't need that much detail, but-
Sure, yeah, just information we had. I mean, as far as other rentals go, we do kayaks and paddleboards and things like that as well right now. I rent generators to, to the right clients. It's, we, we want to be open-minded to other possible rental type things. That's really what we want to continue to do. We found it to be a pretty lucrative business and we've both been teaching for twenty-five years and this is a way of changing, changing the channel a little.
Do you, so there is a pretty smaller area that the building can go in.
Yeah.
I mean, the parcel's pretty large.
Right.
And then that also, you know, parking areas and stuff have to still be within that same area.
Yeah.
So I just want to let you guys know that.
Yeah, spent a lot of time analyzing the lot, both conceptually and being there. And, you know, everything you guys say, twenty-five percent grade, all those things. We also build houses, so it was not born to us. And, you know, what it comes down to is we don't need a huge parking lot. We're not interested in tearing down a lot of trees. We like, we want that buffer. You know, we, we like the setback, you know, and so forth. And we just need a place to keep campers that's appropriate. Our yard is not appropriate. And so that's really, you know, the thing that we're looking for is a place to keep. We would never get to more than ten campers, I'd be getting more gray hairs. So it's not going to get huge. That's not our goal. Our goal is to maintain the business that we have and in the right, you know, close to our home, but in the right location.
Sure, sure.
The board have some questions or comments?
Yeah, so I assume, first of all, I like the building style. I think that's great.
Yeah, thanks. It's the rustic thing that I'm going for, yeah.
Yeah, I like that a lot. I assume if everything shakes out on your end, I mean, I want to make sure the plan I have is going right. So you're basically just, you're just showing us the plan that was approved for the subdivision? Or did you actually have like the building shown on?
No, I haven't, we haven't invested anything on this lot yet. So what I'm showing you is what you guys approved, you know, last year, I guess.
Yeah, I just want to make sure my, my thing is loaded.
But we like that driveway that is right now being used, has access to his other pieces of property and so forth. And that's the only contingency that they put in this purchase and sales is that they're using it right now. They have a large pile of material and so forth, buying with us. Obviously, this process takes time and so forth. But we would pretty much be in that area. And, you know, if we hear all the right things from here- And, you know, if we hear all the right things from here, I believe my next step is I'm going to be contacting this engineering firm and having them do a site plan that's more detailed.
Yep, and that was, yeah, kind of as Dirk said, you know, it's definitely a tight site, but it sounds like it works for what you need.
Yeah, it is a weird site. I mean, it's almost ten, it's ten, almost eleven acres, but mostly unusable. As a triangle as well, but for our needs, it works. So we had looked at one acre lots before, you know, that were already established and too small.
And probably, and I'm just guessing here, but, you know, having some of that buffer area and trees that are there
Yeah.
probably is helpful.
Yeah, we don't need, we're not looking for big neon signs and trying to attract people with what's there on the road because our clients, it's an internet business. You know, that's where our clients come from. There may be somebody drive by that sees, you know, camper rentals, what is that? Because most people don't know that exists. And so, you know, we might pick up something that way with a son or in ten. Route Four, actually, we didn't want Route Four at first, you know, that was, but because of the noise and so forth, like everyone else does it. It makes sense for what we're trying to accomplish.
Yeah, I mean, I think too, and I actually, because, yeah, the existing trail per se is where his current log landing is there. From a site perspective, that's, I think that's a good spot.
It's like the only spot almost.
Yeah, it's really, you're kind of right there at the crest where like your sight lines are good. But, um, yeah, I definitely, I guess I'll throw out this recommendation is, make sure you start that DOT process as soon as you can.
Actually, yeah, we've already submitted the first phase of the application. We're just waiting to hear back. We want to make sure that we can do that before we go through with the purchase.
They have quite the backlog right now, so.
Yeah, I bet.
That's the thing, this lot to us has value, but if things didn't go through and we ended up owning this, that would, I think it's a tough lot to sell. Which is, the price is very reasonable, you know, for many reasons. So that's the biggest thing. A sign, can we put a sign up there? Is that something that we can discuss here or is that, how does that?
Yeah, we have, we have some standard sign ordinances.
Okay.
So, yeah, nothing that's too restrictive, but also nothing that's too crazy.
Okay, sure, and we don't need anything big, just so that it's a business.
I think this one, actually, just because of the width of the right of way, that might be something to talk about with your DOT. There's so many trees that are actually in the DOT right of way. That your sign will have to be on your property. Just to be able to see from the road, there's going to be a triangle, but generally
Well, it could be at the end of the driveway.
On the DOT land though?
Yeah. I think.
I don't know, I'd better have luck with that, but maybe something to work, something considered, because I know at least via us, I think we generally, from a town perspective, we look for it to be on the property, right?
Oh, I get it, because that wrote right of way is so wide.
There's almost fifty feet from the edge of pavement to the property. Yeah, I mean, it looks like you have about fifty feet from the edge of pavement to your property line.
Okay, yeah.
So, just something to consider. And generally, they like wider right of ways anyway, so they probably won't care if you clear some trees.
Okay, that's what I was wondering, can we clear some trees and so?
Yeah, that'll be under the DOT process.
Okay. And the right of way itself, can we, can we cut any of those trees to use any of that land? Not so much to build or anything like that, but, you know, there's a hundred and fifty feet, am I right? I don't, that's probably hard. From Route Four to buildable land, it seems like it's about a hundred and fifty feet setback. So do we not touch that or can I use that for, can I, can I put lawn there, that sort of thing? Not all of it, but say part of it. Is that usable land with the setbacks?
Well, we do have a hundred foot buffer
Okay.
that we like to have on commercial properties. That's usually adjacent to residential. So in this case, some of that land can be used for some grass or lawn or, you know, it doesn't have to be all trees.
And the engineering firm is up to date with that and they'll, they're the ones that can help us design that?
They'll know.
Okay, all right.
Yeah, Scott would end up showing it as a proposed tree line
Yes.
on the site plan.
Sounds like a great use, you know, it would be welcome for our community.
Yeah, I'm glad to see it used. I know when we approved it, so I wasn't sure what would go with it.
How can it be, right? And that's the thing, I think for us, we just want to make sure that we do everything we can before we close on this. Otherwise, it'd be a tough resale.
Do you have any other questions of us?
Next step, as far as that goes, I mean
So say we go ahead and close on this property and we can get the driveway permit, what would be the next step?
The next step would be having a site plan prepared. And then submit it into the board and we would approve the site plan or review it and then
Okay.
Okay.
approve that, and then you would be able to get a building permit.
Yep. Yeah, I worked with Dale when he was in Northwood, so.
And if you choose to contact Scott, somebody like he would know the whole process. Start to finish.
Okay. All right, great, yeah, this, this commercial's new to us, so. Well, thank you for your time.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. The next one on the agenda is another conceptual review subdivision for Hamel on Old Turnpike Road. That applicant is here, we'd like to hear from you.
I want to get a seat for this one since I'm a director of
Sure.
Good evening, I'm Dennis Hamel from GM Two Associates. I've got with you Tom Molden from Nottingham Business Park LLC, who's the owner of William. This is Landy Pritchard from the town of Nottingham, last year, right?
Yep.
It includes basically three parcels, one which was the old USA Springs project with the hundred and seventy-six thousand square foot building sitting on it. And then there's a twenty acre piece in the middle. And then there's a piece that we want to talk about tonight, which is sixty-six acres to the left of all of that. And it was a single family house on there that was burnt, I believe, at some point a few years back. And there's a cell tower on the back of this property. We were here before, a few months ago, with the, with the same project, basically. Little slightly different orientation and number of lots and sizes of things to fit more or less the existing conditions that we found, such as the actual wetland lines. Last time we came in, we had just an estimated wetland line and that changed things. So we wanted to come back in and reintroduce this to you before we go to the zoning board because we're going to need some relief from, because as you know, that red line that runs to the middle of the property is the zoning line between commercial industrial along Route Four and residential in the back. And it doesn't make any sense to do residential in the back behind a large commercial industrial development. So we're going to ask for relief for that. So that's what we're going, that's our next step is to go and do that. I do have some sketches, I don't know if you have eight and a half by elevens, if you can't see that far to that one, if you want to look closely at these. I mean, these, just we do see that.
Sure.
It's the same plan on the board.
Thank you.
And this is strictly conceptual. We most likely were changing something based on more data we collect as we go forward with this process. Just in the beginning phases of the process, when the process is doing primitive surveys of this sixty-six acre parcel and making agreements with the cell tower, do they have easements and rights there? We've got the wetlands lines delineated, we finished the topography on the land. So now we're trying to put all those pieces together. The next step is going to be mapping the soils for different soil types that we need to do to go do an alteration of terrain permit. So we just wanted to come and introduce this to you and see if there's anything that, that jumps out at you that, that you don't like or you prefer differently. Like I said, we are going to go into the zoning board, excuse me, for relief. Allow some of these, three of the buildings are actually in or possibly in the residential zone. So we're going to need, you know, relief from that. In Lot Two, if you look at it, the smaller lot in the middle, we're going to need some relief for setback to the right of way because of the wetlands in the back, just to make, you know, some use of that land as well. And if you look to the, as you're looking at it from Route Four to the left of the road, there's a little wetland strip. And that crosshatched area is basically, there's a big ledge outcropping there, a big mound there, excuse me. And actually, it physically is behind the well and that's before we actually knew where it was at that point. So that whole area back there may not be usable for anything, that's why it's just a big open space there. So this is just to get you to see this piece of land and talk about, you know, regulations and zoning and all that kind of things that we did all this a couple of months ago with the other project, very similar project as this one, except the road's a lot shorter. Got longer driveways going into the, into the, into the units, so that there'd be less of road to maintain by the town once this gets turned over to, you know, the road itself gets turned over to the town. That will be a public way.
Yeah.
But we still will be maintaining some easements, cross easements to allow, say, when we call it the USA Springs project, because they're, they're not landlocked, but they have a long driveway, dead end driveway. And all these will have dead end driveways, so this way it would be another way out, connecting all those things. So if there isn't something blocking the road, we can still get emergency people in and out. So that's the concept, I don't know how much deeper you want to go into it.
Well, just, just a little bit into the uses, and I know you may have touched on that a little bit more in the past, but if you could just, are these going to be light industrial, are they going to be straight business, office? Are they going to be a mix? Is it, or do you not know and it's a bit speculative and you're going to fill them up as?
If I had to, you know, tell you, I think it would be mostly speculative. I think it's going to be more office with warehouse, you know. Plenty of office space around, there's not much, you know, industrial warehouse, light manufacturing, things like that. So I think that's really where the market is. So it'll be a combination, might have ten, twenty percent office. The rest would probably be, you know, the warehouse materials or assemble and manufacture, things like that.
High bay with mezzanines and that kind of stuff.
Exactly, if you need a mezzanine, that's where I've been very successful at developing through the seacoast. And it seems to fit very good. There's a big, big need for it. I think we'll do, you know, very, I think we'll do well here, I think it'll be a good, good mix of businesses. But the office market really is not that robust. There's people working at home now.
Work from home.
These, oh yeah, these office buildings are going to be turned into hyperponic making, going tomatoes or something, I don't know. But one of the reasons we did come here tonight, just so you'll know, it was recommended by some of the town officials here that we come back to you before we go to the zoning board. I mean, with all due respect, I thought we could just go to the zoning board, look for the relief and then come back to you. So as a matter of protocol and respect to the town officials, we said, great, well, come and do what you want us to do.
So I won't take that as you don't want to be here?
No, no, I'm completely fine being here. I love this stuff, this is what I do. But I just wanted to, you know, characterize why we're here, to see what you said and then get, then we could go to the zoning board, ask for the things that we need some relief on. Then from that input, what we would get, then we can kind of fine tune this. You know, the big thing, I think you'd all agree, I mean, it's common sense, where that residential line is in the back, I mean, with the common sense, nobody really wants to go through an industrial park to have their home in the back. Doesn't do the town any good, doesn't, it really isn't something that's economically viable, in my opinion. So I think to get a true commercial use out of here, it would be good use to change that resident, you know, change that to commercial. Town would get some good tax dollars, wouldn't have any impact on schools. And it should be what I think, I remember last time I talked, the board was very favorable on this because you really want to get like a commercial base in the town, which makes sense off Route Four.
Yeah.
So that's just a quick overview from my perspective.
Yeah, I think that, I mean, I think we would be in favor of this rear area being, you know, continue just being commercial. I mean, it, the reason for the setback line being there is it's just a dimensional thing.
Sure.
So it was setback as a thousand feet both sides of the road, throughout the whole corridor, and that's our commercial district. Regardless of the shape and size of any of those lots. The planner's way of saying that's our commercial district.
It's a swath, right.
So in these cases where it makes sense to have a lot more area for commercial and, you know, less for residential, because there isn't a residential component to the backside of it, then it makes a lot of sense to
Yeah, I agree with you.
And yeah, I think we would get into a lot more of the details of access and circulation and parking and those kind of things. And in a subdivision site plan type application, it's a little bit more detailed. But I think this is in line with what you presented before and, you know, I think it's a positive use of that land. Does any other board members want to weigh in on it?
I just would like to be assured that you're still in conversation with Southeast Land Trust and Dwayne Hyde that had shown an interest in protecting some of this back area.
Yep, I've talked to Dwayne, we've been in contact and, you know, he was going to walk the way and get back to me, but we have had tense conversations.
Yeah, yeah, but if you bring him back
A lot of that land back there is going to be developed anyway, so.
But just bringing him back into the conversation will, will be good for him and Southeast Land Trust, but also for Natural Resources in Nottingham and Barrington that is on, to the back.
Yeah, there's eighteen acres back there.
Yeah.
Obviously, just by physical design, that wouldn't be developed anyway, so.
Correct.
It's going to be left as it is to nature and its devices.
Thank you.
I'll open it up to the public if there are any who would like to talk about this application. We do, can have public input. Seeing none. Okay, well, okay, that's okay.
Nope, not you.
Not me anyway, right? Is there any other information you want to get out of us?
I have one, one kind of question, more procedural to go forward. Now, we got two issues here, we got a subdivision and then we're going to have individual site plans on these lots because they're not all going to be built at the same time. So what kind of process do you imagine with that? Do we come in, just get a subdivision approval and then come back with individual lots afterwards? Or, because one gets more redefined depending on customers. You may want a customer that has, I want fifty thousand square feet or I want ninety thousand square feet. So if we show it in advance and try and do all the engineering for that, and then two years later we come back and we want to change it or whatever. I guess, what's the preference? Have you done that kind of thing before?
So, yeah, we've done it either in, in a way that you can just do the subdivision and then have a, an approximate location of that building, have a building area identified?
We could build it, we could show a building footprint area or something of that nature.
Yes, you could build it.
That shows it meets all the setbacks.
Buildable area.
Those kind of things.
Doesn't have to be the outsides of a building, but the buildable area.
Yeah, I could easily do that. And, and, you know, we'd be doing test pits to verify that there's soil on each lot and all that kind of stuff for septic. Because we're doing septic in here. For water, we plan on using, the USA Springs has some very productive wells over there that can provide a lot of water. So, and Tommy owns that whole pot, probably where those, those three commercial wells are. And our thought was that we could have, take, you know, develop one lot and build a large system for it and do a public, not a public, but a community well system that would provide well not only to this building, but to all of the buildings in the, in the subdivision. But these buildings are not going to be water dependent uses. They're basically going to be just toilets and whatever for, you know, it's not going to be a water needing company. So it would be relatively low waterfall, but they would all be sprinkled. So that, that tank and the pumps would be to be able to provide sprinkler systems to all these buildings. The ones over twelve thousand square feet is required by the code. So that, that's our initial thought. And then just obviously provide cross easements to allow to, and everybody to have access to that and use of that water so we don't have individual wells splattered all over the place.
Yeah.
That would be our concept.
You could do it as a, just the subdivision piece of it, if you do have a, a user in mind or, you know, you want to do a spec building, we can also run the site plan application concurrent with the subdivision application. So if you know that.
Right, if he has clients at that time.
If you have clients already, you can, you can do those together.
Anticipating getting into this, you know, for the, in the spring and, you know, and then some type of, whenever we can get the approval start building the roadway, you know, you get the infrastructure in. And that obviously brings in clients as well, once you got a road there.
Yeah, and that procedure is if, you know, so that we could escalate the timeline if you already have a user that wants that and doesn't want to wait for the subdivision to go through and then start the site plan.
Right.
So that could be condensed, but it doesn't sound like you have a user yet and, or say that, but
We've actually had some interest, believe it or not, we've actually had some interest. I had three or four people who've already contacted, looking, exploring to find locations to put their businesses in. I don't know specifically what the business, but I had some names and numbers that have called. So it certainly got some interest with the sign itself front.
And by the time maybe you get through the zoning
You might have more.
you might have a user and anyway, that's, that's an option as well.
I think if you can get a building envelope where you can build and what you can build, then you can mix and match. You have to scale it down or, you know, I think if you can get a building envelope where you can build what you can build, and you can mix and match, if you have to scale it down, or, you know, but that's, the building envelope, for example, got approved, that would be helpful.
Yep. Okay.
Yeah.
Well, thanks for coming.
That's all we need. Yeah, we just want to get your blessing first before we went to zoning. So now we'll take the next step, go to zoning, and then we'll come back and visit you again.
Okay.
And I won't be upset. I'll be glad to be here. Thanks, Dirk.
Thank you.
Have a good night. Thank you everyone.
You too.
Thank you.
Sorry, guys, for the full agenda tonight, but we've had quite a bit of cases, so. So this one is, I'm sorry, I lost the agenda. Site plan for Shea Concrete, um, Old Turnpike Road.
Conceptual review.
Conceptual review. So when we voted on the design review, that has a little bit higher threshold than the conceptual reviews. So the conceptual reviews are really just, we don't have to vote on them, we don't need to close it, we don't have to end them.
No butter notifications.
No, there's no butter notifications.
For conceptual.
So if you would state your name, I think you, you've got the drill, you've been here for a little bit, so.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Thank you for having us. Um, my name's David Biati. I'm the project manager for this project with BSC, um, BSC Group uh, out of Andover, Manchester.
And my name is Jonathan Solomon, I'm, uh, representing, uh, representing Shea Concrete, Greg Stratus. He was unable to be here tonight, so we're representing Shea Concrete as well as Solomon Construction, uh, general contractor working with Shea Concrete.
Okay.
So we've, uh, we've assembled, as I'm sure you're aware, of a conceptual plan, uh, very preliminary conceptual plan. However, we have done a lot of survey work out there. We've located all the wetlands, um, we've tied in all the monumentation, uh, and we have a proposed facility that we would like to suggest to the board, um, of approximately, uh, I believe it's twenty thousand, two hundred and fifty square feet, ninety by two hundred and fifty. Uh, you can see it up there in, uh, the, uh, the orange, uh, color. The, the existing, uh, I'm going to stand up if you don't mind.
Yep.
The existing facility is over in this location here, there's a concrete pad. I'm sure you've been to the site and realized that they're sort of growing quite a bit, and, uh, their precast units are everywhere on the site. So I have these little notes here that, that it's, the entire site is just about, uh, storage for these precast units at this particular time. So, uh, Shea Concrete has purchased some additional properties on both sides of, of this particular, uh, site here, and, uh, they're just looking to expand our, they're looking to keep up their storage capabilities with their production. This here is a proposed, uh, proposed site, uh, manufacturing facility with probably a very small office space. I don't know the, John has the dimensions here. Um, and we propose to wrap this with a concrete apron so that vehicles can, can, uh, can take these, uh, precast units out without disturbing too much of the existing gravel that surround, that will surround this. Uh, this site is on a hill right now, uh, and the plan is to propose the, the finished floor of this, this structure, this facility to be of the same, there, somewhere thereabouts, the same elevation as the existing facility. So a pretty good decent amount of cup on that hillside there. Uh, and again, we have, uh, abided by, uh, the building setbacks, um, and, uh, certainly, uh, a hundred foot buffer from the wetlands, and we would, we're here really to defer to your suggestions as to how we can go forward here tonight.
If I may add as well, the proposed new building facility, anticipated usage would be approximately, uh, thirty feet of the building would be office section. Proposed as of now, it, you know, could be eligible to change, but that's their anticipated usage, so the remaining two hundred and twenty feet. Sure, it's based.
One more note, we'll probably have to go to zoning, uh, as, uh, the client is suggesting that he would like a height of the building to be about forty-eight feet in a zone now where I believe it's currently thirty-four feet. So they would be seeking, uh, some kind of exemption or a waiver from, from that, uh, regulation.
Okay. So describe the operations with the existing facility, so that, are there any changes with, say, the driveway or how vehicles would come in and out?
Uh, no, there, there isn't. Uh, the existing driveway is going to service the new facility as well. We haven't exactly yet figured we were going to propose the extension of gravel portion of that driveway. The paving, the paved portion of that driveway is not going to be added to it. It is just about, uh, right in here. And we are proposing, uh, there's probably twenty or so parking spaces that are scattered all over the, the gravel, uh, the gravel base all over the property at this particular point. We just figured that we would sort of create a little area where they could, the clients and the, and the employees could park over on the side here, uh, but it won't be paved. It's not proposed to be paved.
Okay.
There's no proposed change to the existing building as well. The existing, uh, facility that you see in the one over there, that's primary, uh, approximately ninety percent manufacturing space and ten percent office space. There's no change being proposed to that space as well.
And when you say manufacturing, so that, was this going to be storage or manufacturing that proposed?
Manufacturing.
Okay, so, um, manufacturing of the precast concrete elements?
Yes.
So I just have a, a question. I know you've got like four, four lots that are kind of, that you, that Shea Concrete owns.
Right.
And I'm just trying, I'm a little confused as far as if, if this drawing is showing that you're combining those two lots or if this is actually one lot.
A great question. We are going to have to combine these two lots at this particular time. He does not, at this point, want to combine all of it.
So we would probably need a lot line.
So this would be a lot line adjustment?
Adjustment.
Well, actually.
To combine.
You could just do a concurrent application of site plan and then just remove the lot line as part of the sub, as abandonment of a sub, uh, lot line.
Yeah.
Yeah, this would be a site plan.
Okay, yeah, because otherwise, like, the setbacks, if, if they were all, if it was two different lots, then your setbacks would, would be a little bit different. And also, um, this would probably be classified as industrial, which then uses different setback requirements than commercial?
Mm-hmm.
Yeah, the only difference is the hundred and fifty foot front setback.
Right.
Over.
Instead of a hundred.
Yeah, so I think the, is that, I can't see what that says.
Yeah, we do have a hundred and fifty, you, you just, uh, could you tell that?
So this is three hundred, probably six hundred feet away from, from the front.
And then the other question I had, would, um, would there be any retail, um, coming out of this space that, um, or is it all manufacturing and storage?
It would, it would all be manufacturing and storage. It, uh, there would be no retail space.
In the facility itself, the construction?
Y- yeah, well, if, on, on the property coming in.
I just, I can only assume, I, I think John would be able to, to explain that a little bit better than me, but, um, you know, I, I think that either you can have your product shipped, which I think most, most people do, depending on the size of it, or you can come and certainly pick it up. Whether they have sort of like a retail shop or not, I, I don't believe they have a retail shop. Garage product, it's more, you can drive up, you know, with your work order, your purchase order, and you can pick up your product and truck it back.
If you have a trailer rig enough, I guess.
Right.
Yeah.
Yeah, no, that would be correct.
So, but, but no, uh, no.
Can't go by your Shea Concrete hat there, sweatshirt.
Got it.
But you can go by a septic tank.
I can.
I don't know that they have them all on display for you.
Or some new stairs, yeah.
Maybe you could come pick up the one that's sitting in my, on my property, the prior owner, I, anyway.
Oh, you are?
No, no, on my, on my property is a big flat, I think probably holding tank or something like that, that prior owner just left there. Um, the other, uh, the other question I had was, so for the forty-eight feet, is that, is that request going to be for the whole building height or just a section of the building?
It will not. So that thirty-foot office space that they're expecting to be using as office space for, for the thirty feet, that will be one story, and, you know, for the expectation that, you know, handicap accessible and, you know, not having a need for an elevator or anything like that, that's, that's their anticipation is to use that thirty feet as their office space. Uh, the remaining two hundred and twenty feet is where they would be looking at, uh, having that forty-eight foot, uh, height.
And is the height request because of something to do with equipment in the manufacturing process?
It is, they're, they're manufacturing and their, you know, need for, you know, certain heights with regards to cranes and, and, uh, other equipment that they have for, uh.
Hoisting, hoisting product and, and railing it out to perhaps some trucks and.
They require the facilities, if, if you can run a concrete bucket anywhere, right to the forms of the.
This is, that's like fourteen feet, right, ten, fourteen feet higher than our building height is. Yeah, it's quite a big.
Yeah, that would definitely be a zoning, um, thing, and probably, you know, some discussion with, obviously, the fire chief.
And I just wanted to add as well, part of the, um, expectation with the concrete apron is that it would allow for, in the event, you know, fire, uh, fire truck or fire department needed to get out there, they'd have full access around the entire.
Okay, good.
Will, will there be any need for any site preparation for this new building? I seem to remember that toward the back of the property, it fell off quite precipitously. But that could be even further off the property. It was about ten years ago that we went out.
Uh, from, yeah, I mean, you know, the, the entire property slopes to the river.
Uh-huh.
Uh, they have implemented some drainage swales here already, um, pretty significant swales. I think they're actually working pretty well. Uh, however, yes, beyond, so the, the edge of gravel line is, is approximately here, the existing yard, um, from here down to the wetland area, it might drop another ten to twelve feet. So, uh, but we're, we're quite aware of where the edge of this wetland is, um, and here, this line here, which is not really highlighted. Give me, uh, what was it drawn there?
The setback?
Yeah, this is your hundred foot.
So will you plan to put additional, um, barriers to runoff?
Yes, we're proposing, uh, two stormwater swales somewhere thereabouts. We don't really, we're not even really at that process yet.
Yeah.
Um, but Mr. Shea is more than, more than eager to accommodate all kinds of, all, all of the issues that, that may arise, stormwater-related ones from this expansion.
Yeah, I think especially, you know, if you're cutting into that hill, the grading's going to be pretty important, what, what layback slope is going to be.
Sure.
And, you know, the erosion control, not only just during construction, but in going on into the future.
But also salt being brought in and, you know, for the vehicles coming in and out as well.
Mm-hmm.
And then, um, could you tell me a little bit about the process, the, the manufacturing process and how much water, um, is typically used and how that water is treated?
Uh, so, there's an existing well on the property that they don't anticipate, um, you know, any, any sort of expansion or any sort of, uh, upgrade for that well that's currently there. Um, in regards to what they expect to be, you know, for usage of water, um, it, it all depends on what product they are making at the time and, and, uh, I, I can't speak so specific to that as well, uh, only because, you know, I don't, I don't work specifically for Shea Concrete products. Uh, but again, you know, from my understanding, they're, they're, they don't anticipate any major, um, usage above what they're using now in regards to, uh, you know, adding to the new facility. And, and they have, they have other facilities as well, so they can provide some, some more detailed, um, specific information on what they, what their typical, um, you know, consumption is for water. Um, but again, my understanding is at the existing property we have now, uh, they don't anticipate, you know, a need to add, uh, any, you know, requirements.
Yes, so I think that I, I would appreciate that when, when it comes to, you know, if that could be provided.
Yeah, yeah, so I, I have a, a rough number, but I'd, I'd feel more comfortable going back to the, uh, the company than, than get back to you.
Totally understand.
I can definitely get back to you.
In a perfect world, all the water goes into concrete, but I know, I mean, one thing I definitely, something that beat me to it is, um, obviously, they still got to do a concrete washout, forms, all that kind of stuff, and I think that's the biggest, how they handle their concrete washout.
Right.
Sure.
Did you have anything else, or I had a couple things?
No, I think, I think I've got it all.
Um, I'll, I'll, go ahead.
No, just, um, I don't, I don't know if you've, if you'll need additional, um, checks with DOT, but I just had that, if.
Oh, sure.
Expansion of a permit or.
Yeah, we're, we're anticipating an alteration to rain permit in ADHD, you know, and, uh, filing with the NH, uh, the NH DES and obviously, you know, abiding by their concerns and wishes here as well.
But also the Department of Transportation, because, because the driveway is accessed as theirs, so.
That was going to be my question was, uh, I didn't know if you already, was there already an existing AOT permit for the site or DES permit for the site, or with, if?
Uh, great questions.
Because I know, I, I did some rough talks, and yeah, that was my question is, you know, if you're kind of for the concrete apron and at least what's shown in the building, you're at almost sixty thousand square feet, so not too far away from that hundred thousand square foot threshold.
Oh, sure, we don't anticipate, we anticipate, yeah, it will go.
Which, which makes me feel good, because, um, obviously, it kind of held the certain stormwater standards there, so it kind of, sure, takes it off of our plate from having to worry about it too much. Um, the one thing, uh, I guess confirmed for me, map three lot two A, which is essentially that first property above, um, uh, right below it right here.
Yeah.
Is that, there's an existing home on that, right?
Mm-hmm.
So that's a residential use?
Yes, it is.
This might be more of a question for the board, because I guess I don't have to deal with a commercial site plan for.
Yes, there is a, there is a home on it.
So we, the buffer requirements, as, as far as I've read, you know, there's a hundred foot building setback, and there's just generally a landscape buffer zone shall be required, and then it goes into some specifications as to the design of that buffer zone, what remains for landscape, but.
I'm sure there's going to be vegetated screening.
Yeah, that was a.
To separate the two uses, sure.
And that was the thing, where essentially that, it, it looks like about a fifty-foot wide apron, uh, coming off that building. It's about half the setback. Is, um, I'd definitely be curious to see what plans are based on finish grade of any sort of buffering from that residential use, whether it is beefing up, just adding plantings, uh, combination of fence and planting, ferving. Yep, yeah, maybe, maybe ferving makes sense depending on photography.
Yeah, especially with the building height and stuff.
Yeah, right, exactly. That, I imagine that'll play in as a building height component.
Because I think that house has been there for a long time.
Oh, yeah, a long time.
I think that's why I was wondering, because I think the driveway's kind of closed in. It's kind of hard to see.
Yeah.
Um, and the other thing, question, is there an existing cistern, or is the nearest one over on Freeman Hall? I don't know, which is just down the, just down the roof there.
Yeah.
There's no existing cistern that you guys know of for fire protection or anything like that?
Uh, I, we, we haven't probably located anything yet.
Okay.
Uh, to my, to my knowledge.
Freeman Hall would be the, but I, I guess I, I assumed that you'd be putting in fire suppression on that building. Wouldn't, wouldn't that be pretty standard for something that size?
Well, and something that high.
Yeah.
I guess it'd be driven by the fire.
Because our, our, well, yeah, because our fire apparatus does not. Because our, our, well, yeah, cause our fire apparatus does not.
Kind of hose reach the top.
Yeah.
Yeah, so that's maybe one thing to consider is just.
It might be something that the chief, the chief requires.
Yeah, just that, if you're gonna propose a, a cistern or what, what your plans are there.
Yeah, yeah.
Sure.
And that might be a good conversation before making an application to either the zoning board or the planning board is just, you know, meet with the building inspector, meet with the, uh, fire department.
A preliminary meeting or a relatively informal meeting, I believe, has already occurred with, with both.
Okay.
I'll be sure about that.
Mm-hmm, good.
Yeah, I imagine the chief would be the one to have the most experience.
No, this, this looks okay.
Overall, I'm glad to see it, I would say it's been a, how long has it been there now? The shade, I mean, Shea took over, it was, it wasn't Shea at some point.
I think Shea took it over nine plus years ago.
I'm glad to see it expanding and obviously it's, um.
He said there was a tree growing inside the existing facility.
Is that right?
I don't, I don't know, I haven't, haven't been inside yet, but, uh, they've cleaned it up to the best of their abilities and now they're, now they're storing their, uh, you know, their wares everywhere. But they're growing and growing and growing. And I think the plan is, for whatever it's worth, is to bring, you know, to, to create, I don't know, an additional six to eight to ten jobs in the area, um, but the business model is to stay the same as it is right now, as far as, you know, product and, uh, you know, maybe they're gonna make a little bit more product, but it's gonna be pretty similar to what they're doing now. And I'm sure that ultimately that old structure is going to fail at some point in time, so.
And I met, I mean, cause this is, is the head, the head, the main facility's in Amesbury, isn't it?
It's in Amesbury, isn't it?
Amesbury, yeah, but, um, I imagine it's been a good kind of regional location for them, so.
Correct.
Yeah.
And, and again, they, they don't anticipate, uh, they anticipate, you know, maybe some additional business coming out of this facility, but, you know, and they, their intent is to add at least a minimum of, you know, six to eight jobs, uh, which would be great to bring to more, uh.
And the hours are good too, I mean, you guys are there from maybe early, but you're not there late in the night, so that's kinda nice.
Correct. And, uh, and shake concrete delivers a lot of the product itself, uh, so, uh, but this proposed facility, there will be no vehicles being stored in the facility or anything. Uh, strictly for the main construction purposes.
Probably a very slight increase in traffic volume, if any.
I live just down the road and I don't know, maybe once a month I actually notice a shake concrete truck that's kinda off hours.
I've driven by it three times when I surveyed it, so, three times, went right by it. I don't know, it's hard to miss those stairs sitting.
You didn't miss the, I was gonna say, you didn't miss the flare.
One, one other thing that you might just wanna show too on the plan is like where maybe s- uh, snow removal accumulation would be, given the, um, amount of white lens and stuff there.
Good point.
I think the, the AOT would, they're handling.
So, so may I ask a question?
Yes.
So, process wise, uh, I, I guess we would go back to the drawing board and, you know, answer a lot of these questions and, and put a lot of this information on to add a, a lot of this information to the plan. And then would it be a definitive site plan that we would bring here, or would we go to zoning first?
You'd go the zoning board first?
Right. And then back here with a, with a definitive site plan.
Yeah.
There's a lot behind the trust.
Yes.
And that would just be following on the standard application materials that we need and.
Sure.
Work with, with Kevin and.
Probably more formal, uh, meeting with, and, uh, right. So usually what will happen is buildings might provision denied at your building height, and you can take that denial to somebody. Definitely now say, hey, this is what you're being, uh, bored.
Sure. Go Kevin.
Hi, I'm Kevin.
Nice to meet, nice to meet you Kevin.
Nice to meet you.
Great. Anything else from the board or you guys?
I, I would just reiterate, um, getting opinion, uh, or something from the, uh, the fire chief, um.
Sure.
For that height, um, you know, just that we all know and, and the zoning board knows.
So that'll probably work. So that would be my recommendation to kind of do things together.
Yep.
Bring it to Dale, let, you know, with the understanding you're gonna say, hey, no, you get, you know. Um, and then when you do that, I'll also reach out to, uh, fire.
Great. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you very much for having us, appreciate it.
Yes.
Yeah, good night.
Thank you very much.
The last one on this agenda for public. It's, uh, New Hampshire Electric Co-op, some tree removal, and I do apologize for the position on the agenda.
Don't worry, I'm happy to be on it, so thank you for getting that.
Somebody's gotta be last.
It's fine, I'm happy to be on, so thank you.
Feel like we should give him something. For sitting through all the cases.
All right, I will, I'll sleep well.
Hey, I just wanna cut down some trees.
You get a free septic tank, I'll pick it up anytime.
Thank you.
Let, let's try not to deny it, at least. Yeah. Um, yeah, so this is pretty standard on scenic roads, if you haven't been in our community, we do have a requirement that, um, you know, any tree removal, uh, folks come in and, and, um, just present what they're, um, where they're doing it, um, and kinda the reason why, you know, we've seen, you've got your tree list here and, and, uh, comments on that and where it's located. Um, but yeah, if you could just maybe run through, um, what you've seen out there and kinda the reasons and certainly be great, and state your name.
Okay, yep, my name's Corey Keefe, so I'm the arborist of New Hampshire Electric Co-op. Um, I've, where we're gonna be doing work is, uh, Case Road, Guile Road and Stevens Hill Road. It's not on the entire, um, sections of those roads on, on Stevens Hill, it's just about one point five miles, uh, starting at Deerfield Road. Case Road, I, I think it's about point five, just a half a mile, and then on Guile Road, it's only point eight mile, so we're not gonna be doing, uh, work on the whole road. Um, I drove all these roads and I identified some trees that I feel are a high, are, have a probable risk of failing, um, that are greater than the fifteen inch circumference listed in the statue. Um, I've identified eighteen of them, uh, six are dead, eight are dying, have died back in the tips, three have decays or, or mushrooms or, or food and bodies on them. There is one tree identified on Stevens Hill, tree number thirteen. There's no current defect on that tree now, it is a thirty-inch diameter ash tree and it overhangs our primary wires, as, as you know, and I think it's two thousand nineteen, Nottingham, they had the first detection of Emerald Dash four, so we typically come back, it's about every eight to ten years roughly. Tree's healthy, I just foresee, before the next time we come back, it's likely to be infested with that pest, so that's why I added this one, um, to the list. I didn't see any blonding or anything added, um, at this time. Um, nine of the eighteen trees that I identified out there is their ash, um, mainly what I'm seeing, six are maple and I had three pines on there. Who will be doing the work, we contracted with Asplin Tree Expert Company, they'll be doing the work on Stevens Hill Road, and then we have TTS, uh, Tree Service, they'll be doing the work on Guile and, uh, Case, Case Road. And, uh, we, we have them follow the standard, um, industry arboricultural standards out there. Um, in regard to the permission process, New Hampshire Electric Co-op, we handle that, um, we make contact with all the property owners prior to any work that's done. Uh, we follow RSA two thirty-one, one seventy-two where we mail out a card, and on top of that state standard, we also actually do an automated call roughly two weeks prior to any work that we're doing out there. Um, for the debris, everything roadside, we chip, it goes typically in the chip box of the vehicles, you know, any manicured sections. There are some areas, if it's wooded, they do disperse the chips out into the woods, um, however, making sure, I, I also check up on all the work they do after they're done. Uh, make sure it's not in streams, in large piles, or any drainage swales or ditches, and that goes with the, the wood as well. So, um, that is the majority of, of the project that, that is in Nottingham. Any questions?
Do you chip the ashes?
We do, we do, we chip, we chip, um, the logs, the bigger ones though typically stay, they, they cut them in, um, you know, roughly two to three foot logs and they're, they are left on, on site, not in any drainage swales or anything like that.
So you don't do anything with the blended ones that obviously have?
We, we chip as much as we can, yeah.
Chipped in, in, left on site, cause that, it's.
Right.
You're not supposed to travel with that stuff, right?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Actually, it, it, the quarantine did get lifted, I think recently, just because it's so, it's in nine of the ten counties right now, it's just.
Ah.
Yeah.
It's, it's out of control right now, in some other towns I work, you just drive down roads and you just see a wall of yellow blonding from it, it's, it's just, it's getting bad. I think it was first detected in Concord and, I know, talking, you know, to, to them, they, there's a lot of mortality going on, so.
And then usually, what's the time of year, Corey, that the, this work is done?
Yep, it, it can vary, as of right now, I've been told by the contractors, their predicted date is roughly around June, May. That could change, but right now that is the time period we're, we're looking at.
Yeah, later is better though for bird nesting.
Oh, yeah, a- and, I mean, I, I, we also wanna stay off the roads for mud season on a lot of them, so we.
Especially Stevens though.
Yeah.
Yeah, Stevens, exactly, so.
I think all these are dirt roads, so.
Yeah.
Yeah, Case.
And actually on Guile, um, I think it was, no, Case Road, we're on just the asphalt section of that.
Oh, that's good then.
Where it turns to dirt, we, there's, I, I'm, I'm, it might be eversoars further down, but, um, there's nothing, we don't have any wires further on the dirt section there, so.
And what do you see, why are you seeing these, uh, sugar maples, do you think?
What's that?
Why are you seeing the dead sugar maples, just age?
Uh, a lot of these were so dead, yeah, I could see, one thing about sugar maple, it doesn't, and not that this is the cause, but they're one of the species that doesn't do great with road salt. But it's, it's also, some of these are just old, like you're saying, and they inhibit the woodpecker, affiliated woodpecker, and a lot of them just have mushrooms on them, so, um, yeah, there's, they're, these ones are all just completely dead.
Presently, there's a lot of native trees, a lot of pine don't even handle salt well, so.
Yeah, yeah, a lot of times evergreens.
A lot of native trees don't like the salt.
No.
No, no, you have to, you have to use it to, you know, protect, you know, safety of the travelers too, so.
And many times these scenic roads have trees right up to the gravel line, so.
Right.
They are a good, um, plow catch.
Yes, yep.
Oh, yeah. Even the ones that aren't right up, believe me.
We've taken pictures of those, remember?
We've got some right along our roadway that it's like, but, yeah.
Targets.
I mean, you guys must be busy with what's going on with the ash trees, it's, it's.
We are, it's, um.
Just sad, really.
It is, it is, uh, one thing that, one thing that we're seeing with the ash so far is it typically, it's good and bad. The ones that are further away, what we've seen is typically they break apart piece by piece, which could be worse for us if they're right over the lines, cause that one tree could cause multiple outages. But we haven't been seeing them break at the trunk as much, however, I talked to some foresters in Detroit where it's been there for a while and they say they don't even let their climbers touch, climb the trees at all, cause they just snap at the base, so I have, we haven't seen that yet, but, um, I don't know, hopefully it doesn't get that bad, but it looks like it's going that way.
Corey, I have one small question, one other question, what about the brush that people say that they come and they cut, cut back?
The brush?
The brush, which in actuality are native shrubs that bear berries for wildlife.
Mm-hmm.
Do you normally leave the brush?
We typically do cut the brush, um, down, there's some stuff, some, there's certain shrubs that don't grow tall, that we leave. Um, I know like honeysuckle stuff is typically left, depending where it is, sometimes if it's in an off-road location, there's no way for us to access. I do have them cut that just because for a lineman, you know, two o'clock in the morning, they're going on off-road to restore an outage or take a tree, that, that definitely affects them. Um, there are, and blueberries we leave, um, stuff like, like that, um, so, but a lot of the smaller brush we, we do cut, just, it's also, our rotation is, like I said, it's roughly eight to ten years, so a lot of times by that time, we cut it and the stuff is close to the primary.
Oh, yeah, goes back fast.
Yeah, it does, it does, certainly, comes back to the bench and so, um, but we do, um, on our website, you know, we do list some species that we recommend planting next to the wires that are small, low growing stuff, so we're actually looking to expand that list as well.
Oh, good.
Get some stuff from Bill again, so, yeah.
If you're in town, I, I, cause it's easier for you guys to dispose of the chips in town or dump them in towns, they don't have to truck them to one of the regional locations. Is there ever a need, W or, uh?
I, I actually forgot to bring that.
Rec department?
Yeah, if anybody wants any chips, we're more than help, you know, happy to give any, anybody them at no cost. If there is a central dumping location, that's great, if any one of you individuals wants them, you know, let me know.
Like for trails, public trails?
Well, I was gonna say, I didn't know if it would, if there was space at the sand pit that like, they could at least be stockpiled out of the way. Talk to Sean or something like that.
Yeah, that would, that'd be great.
Yeah.
There's plenty of space at the sand pit.
Yeah, I was gonna say, as long as, as long as he can tell you where, but, uh, Sean, the road DPW director, probably able to tell you.
Okay.
Or Smoke Street, it's probably somewhere at that sand pit.
Okay, yeah, no, I'll, I'll reach out to him, thank you for saying that.
Cause that would make it just with, you know, Marston or something, I mean, some of these chips were random stuff.
Oh, yeah, yeah, trails.
Yeah.
Like, yeah.
Playgrounds and.
Perfect, yeah, yeah, good idea.
Um, okay, well, if.
Do we make a motion?
We do need to make a motion. We need to approve the, um, tree cutting on scenic roads.
Uh, let me see, I'll make a motion that we approve the tree, tree trimming remove, removal, um, on scenic roads for New Hampshire Electric Co-op, um, on Stevens Hill Road, Guile Road and Case Road as depicted.
A second.
Motion and a second, those in favor?
Aye.
Those against? So you stuck around for a good approval.
Thank you so much, I appreciate it.
Start with denial and with approval.
Thank you very much, have a.
Nice night, thank you.
Have a good night.
Thank you.
Uh, yeah, let's just do some quick updates.
I got nothing.
I don't think I do.
Nada.
I don't have anything, John?
Pretty want me to start?
Oh.
Yeah, wait, John's got, I was gonna say, we, John's got the good stuff.
What do you got, John?
John.
You had a long Saturday.
Well, did you guys have, none of you guys were there for deliberation on Saturday?
I wasn't at that.
I listened to it.
All right.
I had to work, but I listened to it.
Long day.
Yep.
Actually, I had a.
Changed the cut, but it was a long day, uh, make sure people go out and vote on March eighth. Uh, school board had their deliberation last night, which I was at.
How long did that go?
Uh, that went till ten o'clock.
Oh, wow.
Yeah, so, doing pretty well. Sleep during the day and work at meetings at night. Uh, we had a brief BOS meeting, um, you know, make sure everything's all set up for the Warren Ark voting's, uh, going on, uh, we're coming up, you know, trying to get everything organized and done, how we think we ever got, we lifted the mask mandate, so that is no longer. Um, but, you know, we do encourage people to wear them, you see we wore them, I'm still wearing them at all the meetings I go to. So again, it's something that we are encouraging, but it is not, uh, mandatory anymore. That was one of the big things.
Why was the rea-, what was the reasoning for that?
Lifting it, uh, the school went and did it, and then, uh, the view of the board from, you know, after talking to Dale or Health, um, you know, director, we wanna call him Dale, and then, uh, from other things, we, you know, the news and other studies that said that it's on decline and it, um, it just seems like there's something that we can do. So again, we strongly recommend it, you know, and as you see, it was nice here tonight, pretty much everybody in the room was still wearing them.
Yeah.
So that's great.
They probably didn't know.
What?
They probably didn't know.
Well.
I, I did mention it to some people that were here that asked, so they, they asked, but yet they still kept them on, which is good.
So I think it's gonna be a, I mean, even though it's a deliberation series where, I mean, there was a lot of people, and I still mask very few that wasn't, so. I think the overall health conscious that people know to wear them and stuff like that, that should wear them, so it's, it's what.
Yeah, and consideration of others, really.
Correct, right, exactly. You know, I was the only one wearing it, one at the selectmen's meeting on Monday night, and they all asked, it was all right for them not to have masks on, if we had one, I said, sure, I didn't care, but. It's a preference, yeah. So we just switched it on that. They're gonna be really happy to see all this stuff, you know, that developments and stuff like that on Route four, so I'll make sure I bring up all that on there too.
Yeah, no, that's some good positive, uh.
That's great positive stuff, that, that's all I care.
Yeah.
It's a great turnaround on that property, the huge just dump, so.
I mean, we just talked about three potential commercial developments and.
Well, let's not celebrate until we see.
Well, no, we talked about it.
No, really.
But, but clean.
People celebrated before and that really backfired.
No, I'm just saying, we've talked about it.
No, I know.
We haven't, we haven't had any commercial development in front of us for a while.
A couple of them put enough money and effort in to get to the existing portion.
Charlene already poo-pooed it, we gotta stop the conversation. Yeah, she poo-pooed it, nope.
Um, I had a question, I guess I haven't had time to drive the, the line item of the budget, and it's because I was watching back some of the board's selectmen or the budget committee. Have we figured out the microphones or the technology, I feel like it's still like, uh, the sound on the recordings.
If you went to the school on Saturday, you're, W's are all messed up and what's for that, that meeting, uh, no, but it is something that we're working on.
Okay.
But you know, again, I mean, there's, there's just money that we can spend and money that we're not, we don't spend, it's.
Bob says that, that folks that come up and, and sit at the table, you can't hear what they're saying.
Right.
When, I think when the heating system goes on, you, and it muffles. I think when the heating system goes on, you, and then it muffles it.
Oh, yeah.
If someone is, um, if someone hits that microphone, it goes muffled.
We've always been a good town of, uh, half fixing something without spending a lot of money and keep putting a little bit towards, a little bit towards it. And the ultimate goal would probably start fresh with everything.
Yeah.
But that would be a, uh, significant cost, uh, which we haven't had bids for, we haven't looked into, into that way. Uh, so for now, we are on a, what can we do to improve it? Method? Um, pronoun?
Is that called kicking the can in the rug?
Again, we're sticking with traditions, um, you know.
We had enough, there's enough Warren articles, we didn't need more Warren articles.
Eh, well, right, so, you know, again, it's something where we'd have to look and do more cost, but, you know, we had things that we're figuring out, you know, with the renovations we're putting into the old tower hall, the renovations we're sticking into the kitchen, I mean, we are, there's a lot of expenditures that are going out. So, but again, it's duly noted, cause we sit here for the meetings, it's like a break, else, you all been there, you hear it on TV, it's, it's frustrating. So.
Thank you.
Do we want to do minutes really quick?
Oh, yeah.
Prove the minutes?
We're here, we're here.
Let's get it off our plate.
Get it off the plate, yeah.
With a check mark.
I don't think it's really gonna matter, we're doing more minutes.
What date are they, Sue?
I, I don't, don't do that to me, I've already packed that.
One twenty-six?
Yeah.
I made a motion that we accept the minutes from January twenty-six, two thousand and twenty.
I'll second.
Motion in a second, those in favor?
Aye.
I wasn't here, but I trust you.
That's all it takes.
There you go.
Great.
I made a motion to adjourn.
Second.
Charlene's on top of it. Second motion, everybody, let's get out of here.
Thank you.
Good night, we got through a lot of cases.
Thank you, Derek.
Yes.
Very well done.
Thank you.